Yeah, meeting ahead of us. So let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. I'm Steve Bajanski. I'm this year's president of the Rotary Club in Nerdonia Hills. Thank you for joining us. John, could you do us the honor of our invocation this afternoon?
Sure, let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity to meet together. Thank you that we have the technology that we can see and hear each other and may it improve so that we can do more things. We pray for our upcoming election, for our election officials, for those running for office. Keep us, keep them safe, keep them healthy, and let it proceed successfully. Keep us strong, dear God, in our Rotary mission that we might fulfill your will. We ask these things in your holy name, dear God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Debbie, if you could show us the American flag so we can do the pledge of allegiance. There we go. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As mentioned earlier to some of our Rotarians, we're going to mix the meeting up a little bit and go right to our speakers right away. Some of them have a packed schedule, so we're going to honor them by letting them speak right away. Dave, I will let you do the honor of the introduction. Dave?
Okay, thank you, Steve. So this week, we have three offices that are attending Summit County Executive, Summit County Council District Number One, and Summit County Prosecutor. We're going to start off with Summit County Executive. I did not have any response from the candidate running, John Chapman. And our incumbent is online here, Irene Shapiro. Irene, the floor is yours.
Well, good morning, everybody. We were chatting a little bit before. I am Eileen Shapiro. I am your county executive, and I've held this position since 2016. But I want to thank you all. I've been with you before, and I want to thank you all for having us back again. You know, it's my honor to spend every day working to make Summit County a better place for all. Before I became county executive, I served on council for 10 years, three years as council president. And I came to council with a background both as a small business owner and a corporate executive, as well as spending many years being involved in community engagement. Today, as county executive, I run a billion and a half billion, I started to say billion and a half, a half a billion dollar operation and nine departments. In my years of office, I have led the county through the opioid epidemic, county jail reform, efforts to overhaul aging 911 dispatch systems, a resurgence in our local economy, and numerous workforce initiatives, and it brought diversity, inclusion, and equity into the forefront, all the while maintaining our double A plus bond rating and with the lowest sales tax in the state of Ohio. When I took office, I challenged myself and my team and those that we work with to rethink how we do business. I challenged and brought together several communities. Let me back up here. Summit County has been trying to do centralized dispatch for 2025 years. And I brought together a group of people and asked them, communities, and asked them to consider doing consolidated dispatch. This was maybe three and a half years ago, three, three and a half years ago. And today, our county partners that are in this endeavor have saved millions of dollars while simultaneously upgrading the tech 911 technology. It's not all up yet, but it is really cool stuff. So let me give you an example. In a later phase, should there be a fire in your home? And you take, and if you are part of the system and it's built for any of our communities to be able to come on if they want to, you take a picture of it, and when you send it in, it will go to the fire, it'll go 911 into the fire department, and they'll know what they're coming into when they're arriving at your home. They'll be able to see it. So that's just a tip of the iceberg of the technologies that will be updated, and we'll get all the updates as we go forward. I challenged our economic development partners to think about how we attract, retain, and grow business in Summit County, and how we provide employment opportunities to all of our residents. Today, you may have heard of Elevate Greater Akron. It's a strategy that has put us in a path towards a stronger, more equitable economy. We're attracting businesses of all sizes, from Amazon to our local small businesses. We are seeing new investment in Summit County and in our residents. I've challenged myself and my team to consider how we reflect those we serve. Since becoming executive, I've been thoughtful and intentional about diversity and inclusion, and have increased diversity hires in the executive's office and increased diversity in new board and commission appointments. I appoint to over 50 boards and commissions, folks. So there have also been some unforeseen challenges, one being the opioid epidemic, and of course, the other, the global pandemic. In 2017, I declared a state of emergency in Summit County and filed a lawsuit against the drug manufacturers and distributors. Summit and Cuyahoga Counties were chosen by Judge Polster, who is in federal court in Cleveland, as the two bellwether communities for the other 2,000 communities that had filed lawsuits against the distributors and manufacturers across the country. We negotiated and received a settlement that was substantial and has comprised of both dollars and medications. We had another lawsuit that was scheduled for next month with, I call them the retailers, the CVSs and Walgreens of the world. That has been postponed until 2021. We're waiting on a date from Judge Polster. Okay, so then in March, COVID hit, and now more than ever, we need solid, strong leadership. Again, I took swift action to declare an emergency that ensured us that we could access the critically needed resources. Every state got an out, the care's money came down, every state got an allocation, and every community over 500,000, which Summit County is, got a direct allocation. Our allocation here in Summit County was $94.4 million. We took quick action to get that, brought our partners together to get that money into the hands of our community. We have to spend it by December 30th, so it was a very short timeline. We've created and supported grant programs for small businesses. We are on a third round, which, given where we're at, will be the final round. We funded 1,900 businesses, and now in this round, I believe they had over 1,800 grant applications again. When we talk about small businesses, that's a businesses maps is up to 30 people in this third round. So it's not 500 as the SBA defines it. We've done rent and mortgage and utility assistance. If somebody was being evicted, they moved to the top of the line. I have to tell you that the incredibly high demand and exceptionally high demand in the utility piece of that. We've worked with Malcolm Costa and his group for that utility piece. We worked with the United Way for the rent and mortgage assistance. We have put money into nonprofits, which the Akron Community Foundation, we knew as a government entity, we could not do all that by ourselves. So we went to the partners that we thought were best positioned, and I have to tell you, I asked, and they came to the table and said, how can I help you? And how fast do you need it? Because we needed to get the money out to our communities. We put money into all 17 of our public school districts. We put payroll support, which is for public safety, into all of our 31 communities. We are paying for technology for our seniors, and I could go on and on and on. The programs that we have adopted and we've taken, if you will, to our communities who are now being looked at as models for the state. There are still communities struggling to figure out how they can help their small businesses statewide. So I am proud of the steps that we've taken to help our residents. I do have concerns about 2021. We don't know what's going to happen. That money, as I said, has to be spent by the end of December, and at right now, I believe the state is looking to do something, but it's not out yet. I mean, we're expecting, we talked to the governor yesterday, expecting perhaps there'll be something for small business in the not-too-distant future, but that wasn't a guarantee. But we are putting plans in place, not only how we get through 2021, but what does a resurgence, we will come out of this, folks. And what does that look like? And how can we best position ourselves? So I guess what I'm saying is if I'm elected, we elected as your county executive, you can be assured that you have somebody as a leader who works across property lines and geographic lines to get to our communities what they need. All I can tell you is that, given what we've been through and all that we have accomplished, I am just so incredibly proud of our communities. Everything that we have asked, everything that we have brought forward, people listen and are engaged and want to respond. And the energy that's even in the face of all of this, the energy that is out there and the collaborations, really, I can't tell you, we take it for granted here. I don't, but many people just take it for granted. We really, really have a unique community, and I'm very, very proud of it and all of you. So I want to thank you for your time. If you have questions, I'd be happy to take that. I am on a timeframe, but I'd be happy to take questions if you have them.
Thank you, Irene. Is there a Rotarian there that would have a question? Quiet today.
You really? Did I overwhelm you all? Sorry. It's a lot of information in a short period of time. Again, I do thank you. I do have to hop up. I do thank you, and you all know how to reach me or my office if you ever need anything. And I do hope I have the opportunity to serve you for another four years. Stay well, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene.
Somebody have a question?
I do.
There you are.
So in terms of, in terms of your relationship with the actual city, how do your vision, your symbiotic relationship between Summit County and let's say some of the cities within the county?
With all the, we work with all 31 communities. I have to tell you, we have a very different landscape. So what the city of Akron might need is very different than what Hudson might need, what a township or a village, depending even how small or how large they are, where they sit geographically. So for example, Copley has a lot of development, a lot of housing. Clinton, however, does not. They have sewer problems and so our role is to help facilitate those communities to the extent that we can provide services and/or make connections and bring the right people to the table, whether that's money, whether that's another resource, but it's to help them grow their base, if you will, and look to how they can move forward and expand. Some of our communities, Silver Lake, if they could get rid of their, I shouldn't say get rid of, if they didn't, they would, they don't claim to be an economic development or community, they're a quality of life. So their country club and their florist, they're glad they're there, but they're not going to have anymore. So what they want to do is different than how much or what you want to do. So we try to work with each of them, still looking at some of the ways that we can, like the 911 dispatch, and we have some other ideas, how we can collaborate where everybody still has power and input and save us money. We're not taking anything away. It's always an opt-in that makes sense for those communities. Did that answer your question? Yeah, he's shaking his head yes. Okay. Anybody else? If not, stay healthy and stay well, and I hope to see you all in the not-too-distant future. I don't have to wait till I get elected to come back to talk to you anytime. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you, Eileen. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to Summit County Council District One, we have two candidates. Rita Darrell and Ron Kohler. Ron is the incumbent, and we're going to start off with Rita Darrell. And I forgot to mention Tyrene, even though there wasn't another candidate there, that I was timing it. And we're going to try to keep it to five minutes so we can open it up for questions and answers. So Rita, if you would like to start off with the Summit County Council District Number One. You'd need to turn your volume up.
They had muted me before. Sorry about that. I want to say thank you. I went on and prepared just a fast statement so that, you know, because of the time. I want to say thank you, and that I'm Rita Darrell, and I'm the candidate for Summit County Council District One. I am a 21-year resident of Summit County. I have been actively involved with the Democratic Party and Summit and Cuyahoga Counties for over 40 years. Since moving to Macedonia, I have been an effective and energetic member and supporter of our Nerdonia Hills schools and our local politics. I served on Macedonia City Council from 2012 to 2015, and I also was selected as your council president for 2015. I remain actively involved and attend numerous meetings and community events, both locally and in Akron area. I am quick to respond to those in need, and I possess the love and passion necessary to serve our communities. I pledge my commitment to serve as your voice and to support and promote all local businesses. Today, I am asking for your help. To learn more about me, please visit my website, www.ritaderrell.com, and consider making a donation to support my candidacy for Summit County Council District One. And I am proud to say that I have been endorsed by several, several elected officials. I've also been endorsed by United States Senator Sherrod Brown, Summit County Prosecutor Sherry Bevan Walsh, Summit County Engineer, Fiscal Office, and Clerk of Courts. Eight current members of the Summit County Council, the Matriots, as well as various labor unions, including the Tri-County Regional Labor Council, AFL, and CIO, and the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 219, just to mention a few of those. I, you know, if you visit my website, you will see all of the endorsements in full. Please don't forget to vote Rita Darrell on November 3rd, 2020, or we do have early voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ron Kohler. Ron?
Well, good afternoon, everyone. I am Ron Kohler. I represent you on Summit County Council District One. Eileen Shapiro mentioned 31 communities in Summit County. Actually, 12 of those 31 communities are in District One. So there's, there's a lot of townships and villages and a couple of cities in District One, and it ranges from Twinsburg and Reminderville in the east, all the way to Richfield in the west. So it's quite a large area to represent. I want to first of all, say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to represent you. I first met many of you four years ago over at Gambitas, and looking forward to the day where we can get together again in person at Gambitas and enjoy some of the delicious food that they make there. So a little bit about my background, I have resided in Summit County for, I think, about 55 of my 60 years. Have lived in Macedonia for four, six years, and now I'm residing in Sagamore Hills, where I've been for the last two years. I am an attorney in private practice, have been for 33 years now. And the reason I decided to run four years ago was at the point when I decided to run, there were no attorneys on Summit County Council. After I announced, two other attorneys announced they were going to run, and they both won, and then one became a judge. So right now, we have two attorneys on Summit County Council. I know a lot of people don't like attorneys very much, but I think being an attorney gives me a special set of skills and experience and knowledge and better serving you as a councilman. And I think that gives me a real advantage, especially in dealing with the charter and laws and legal requirements. I've also served as a township trustee for four years, so I have a good understanding of how things work and how heavily the townships rely on the county. And then for two years, I worked as deputy director and then director of the Summit County Board of Elections, 2010 through 2012. I'm an employer. I'm a business owner, and I'm a property owner in Summit County. And so I think I'm a lot like those of you who are members of the Rotary. I really enjoy serving on council. I think during the four years I've been on council, I've missed one meeting, and that was because I had to go to Columbus for training on how to be on county council. I do a lot of asking questions at council meetings, and especially when it comes to spending money. We spend an awful lot of money, and I want to make sure that we're spending the money properly. And sometimes when I ask questions from the different departments, well, why are we buying so many licenses for LexisNexis, for the county prosecutor to be able to do legal research? Do we need that many? And the person says, well, I don't know, but we'll find out and come back and tell you. And they come back and say, yeah, we didn't need that many licenses, so we're able to do it for less money. And I think it's important to have kind of a balance on county council between Republicans and Democrats. There are 11 of us on council, eight representing districts, three at large. Right now, we have three Republicans and eight Democrats. So a lot of times, the most we can do as Republicans is ask questions and voice our opposition, which doesn't happen that often. I want to say Eileen, Eileen Shapiro is doing an amazing job. She has a great staff that's working with her, and she really is doing things very well for the county. We're in good shape financially. There's always concern about an economic downturn resulting from the coronavirus, but we've done well with the federal money that's come in to get it out to the townships and villages and cities and school districts and to people who need help with rent and mortgage assistance and utility assistance and small businesses. Also, we put together a grant program for them. Recently, we just got approved body cams for all of our sheriff's deputies that have interaction with the public. So all of our sheriff's deputies that are on patrol are going to have body cameras. We just approved purchasing 115 of them, and that's something I've been really pushing for behind the scenes. We've addressed the opioid problem. We've provided land for restore addiction services to build, and they're doing that. They're doing their work without receiving any tax money. That's down at the, in Springfield Township or Lakemore at the former campus for the Edwin Shaw Hospital. And a lot of good things are happening in Summit County. Your county is in the care of good people who are working very hard to make sure that things are done properly, and I would ask for your support so I can serve another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. At this time, we'd like to open it up to the floor for questions. Anybody have a question?
I have a question. Peggy Spragons, resident of Macedonia. As you know, when you get your tax bill in Summit County, it lists all the various taxing districts that our Summit County taxes support. And while, you know, most of them are important, I understand the social services and understand, of course, the schools and everything else. I am a little disappointed to read what I read in the Beacon Journal about the zoo levy. And I support the zoo. Everybody loves a zoo. We always love the zoo. But it's really disheartening that Summit County put that tax levy on there and didn't do their research relative to that information that was in the reporting in the paper about their finances. Everybody comes back to the voters every time they need more money, rather than trying to find other ways. And I'm, I mean, we're Macedonia's overall doing well, you know, and fluent community, but there are so many people that are suffering financially, especially with COVID and being out of work, that I just don't think we can continue to go back to the voters every time when agencies have that kind of money in their coffers. So I don't know if that's a question or a statement, but I would just hope whoever wins at Summit County does a better job looking at these agencies and making sure the money is really, you know, on task.
I appreciate that comment, and I want to say I live my life frugally, and I expect government to be frugal also. I think we need to be careful about having an increased tax burden, especially on our senior citizens. And I made it clear to the zoo director when I met with him that this is going to be it. We're not going to be renewing this. And he has some plans to do some expansion of the zoo, bring in some more animals. And I'm not in favor of putting more and more money into things like this, but it's on the ballot, and if you feel that shouldn't be done, then you can vote against it. And that's unfortunately, it looks like some people in government feel that there's just an unlimited amount of money to get from the taxpayers. And sometimes the taxpayers have to say, no, you don't need more money. And the way they do that is by voting no at the ballot.
Well, I just ask for more scrutiny before things go to the ballot.
Right.
Thank you.
Would you like to comment to that?
Well, I didn't see the article, but I know that, why I've been out there campaigning. I have been, a lot of residents have asked me for zoo signs. So I know that I personally have given out zoo signs. I went and I picked up some because a lot of residents wanted a zoo sign, but I did not see the article. But I do know that I'm not afraid. When it comes to levies, I mean, a lot of yous that do, that know me, I'm not afraid to question levies at all, whether they're, you know, we need them or we don't, or we're, you know, we're broke or we're not broke. So I've been, you know, I'm very good at speaking how I feel about any type of levy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Not hearing anything. I'd like to thank Rita and Ron for coming to our meeting and speaking to us.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
And good luck. We're going to move on to Summit County Prosecutor. The current prosecutor Sharon Bevan Walsh is incumbent, and she is running against Michael Washington, who is online with us. And I understand Sharon, or Sherry is dealing with COVID right now. I'm not sure if that's why she couldn't make it, but Michael, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who is attending, for attending, taking some time out of their day to meet and join in virtual fellowship, even though we can't meet directly in the same room. My name is Michael Washington. I'm running for Summit County Prosecutor. I've been an attorney for 18 years, 13 of which were spent in Southern Ohio as an assistant prosecutor and an appointed prosecutor in that particular county. And after I left the Southern Ohio area, I came, moved into Cuyahoga Falls after getting married, live in the falls with my wife and two stepchildren. When I first got into the Akron area, that was when I went to college at the University of Akron. I attended law school at the University of Akron as well. So I spent approximately eight years during during that educational phase of my life in the Akron area. And when I decided to make a move back to Northeast Ohio, Summit County is where I wanted to make my home. As I said, I've been an attorney for 18 years. I own two businesses that I started. One is my law firm, Washington Law LLC. The other is a firearms instruction marksmanship company. That's called Higher Gun Tactical. And with that, I not only instruct people on the responsible use of firearms for concealed carry permits, but I also spend some time volunteering with Boys and Girl Scouts to teach them marksmanship as well. And I have certifications through the NRA and also the CMP, which is a civilian marksmanship program. That was in our organization. It was started by Teddy Roosevelt back in the early 1900s. Moving forward, I'm running for the office of prosecutor because we have a situation in Summit County where I think that the, I think that the criminal justice system is broken. I think that there are a lot of people who are dissatisfied with the way things are done in this county, the way cases are prosecuted, the way cases are investigated. And I think that we need new blood in there. I think we need a change. I think we need someone who has experience in a prosecutor's office, but also someone who has experience in a prosecutor's office, but also understands the concept of bringing new ideas to the forefront and, and doing things in a, doing things in a better way and finding the best way to do things, instead of just doing things the way they've been done before. And I think that, given, given the year that we've had with COVID, I think that this is something that has taken a lot away from everyone in the county, it's taken a lot away from everyone in the country, just, just dealing with, will the kids be going to school, will they not, will they have extracurricular activities? These are things that kids look forward to, and I think that there's been a lot of disappointment this year based upon that virus. In, in regards to further qualifications that I have, I've personally prosecuted thousands of criminal cases that include everything from juvenile court all the way up to adult cases involving murder, child sex abuse. The gambit, my, my experience runs a gambit as far as any level of court that involves a criminal case, child support, Department of Job and Family Services, child abuse cases, I've handled all of those. Tax, tax sale cases for recouping delinquent taxes, pretty much everything that could be done in a prosecutor's office, I have experience in working through those things, as well as the administrative experience needed to handle the budget and work through things and handle staff people as well. And I think the biggest thing missing in this office is a sense of leadership. In order to be a proper leader, you have to have boots on the ground, you have to lead from the front, you have to make sure that the people that work for you know that you are there, not just to guide them and direct them through what they need to do, but also assist them and support them. I think we have a prosecutor that's been in office for twenty years, and it's been a little bit too long. And in the past, especially the last few years, there have been some reports in the newspaper regarding a lack of leadership and also employees that have, in a sense, bullied other employees and done things that I, I think is just wrong on a lot of different levels, and, and we, we do need a change. And I welcome your questions. And again, thanks to everybody for being here.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions out there?
I got a question. You know, with the COVID outbreak going on, is your decision to prosecute somebody anyway be affected by that? In other words, well, this doesn't seem to be a bad enough area that we want to incarcerate somebody and, and put them in a group with other people. In other words, with, with this COVID outbreak, does it affect your, would it affect your decisions in any way?
From a logistics standpoint, it would, only from the concept of, of dealing with the courts, certain judges throughout Ohio have yet to have a jury trial. But in, in regards to logistics of how to get through the jury system, it, it would in, in, in respect to that, but it would not affect a charging decision. If I, if I believe that there's enough, enough evidence to prove a case against someone, they're going to get charged. And it's going to be up to either a jury or a judge, depending on what option the defendant would take, if they want a jury trial or they want a bench trial direct to the judge, it would be up to that fact finder to make the determination of guilt or innocence. I, I would not make a charging decision based on COVID or frankly, any other situation that may come up. And we have a perfect example. In Franklin County, you have a city prosecutor that failed to charge any individuals who, they were breaking windows during, during demonstrations and it turned into a riot, breaking windows at, at the State House. The, the Columbus City Prosecutor decided not to do anything. Not for nothing, but if that happened in the city of Akron, and someone committed a felony, felony type of vandalism on a statue or something else, they're getting prosecuted. I, I, I don't have any sympathy for someone who destroys public property or private person's property in, in order to try to make a political statement. I think that's wrong. I think it needs to be fought on every level. I think that, I think that the people, just in general, people have had enough of that.
Thanks for bringing that up, because that was actually going to be my next question. Thank you.
Thanks for the question.
Any other questions? Quiet group today.
If I could add one more thing on, on the jury, if I may, Mr. Fike?
Sure.
Okay. I have had an opportunity to try cases to juries during the COVID outbreak, tried a murder case in Portage County. That particular case involved a self-defense claim, we have a hung jury, we're going to have to retry that in December. So it is possible for courts to have jury trials with people masked up, with separators within the courtroom and all of those things. So it's possible to do that, it's just up to the, to whether or not the, the judges would be courageous enough to make, take that step forward.
Have they been processing anything through electronics?
I believe that, I believe that the criminal cases are still ongoing in Summit County. Most of the, most of the appearances, other than certain evidentiary items that you have to be in a courtroom, those, a, a lot of those things have been online, pre-trials, some status hearings, things of that nature. The things where you need to be in court, I think they're starting to open those things up. And again, it's been a learning curve that's, that's been like a hockey stick for this thing. You don't know, you don't know what will help, what won't help. And, you know, other than stating the fact that Ms. Bevan Walsh has been diagnosed with COVID-19, you know, even if you wear a mask and do everything right, you can still get this. So it's, it's, that's, that's the, really the tough part here.
I have one more question for you, real quick. I also have a CCW, and you said you're an instructor. The, it's up for renewal, and the renewal has been kind of closing Summit County for right now. You can't even put in an application. Do you know when that's going to open up again?
Well, part of, well, there's an organization called the Buckeye Firearms Association, they actually endorsed me for the position during the campaign. They have been assisting in lobbying efforts to, to the Ohio General Assembly to extend anyone during the COVID outbreak that their, their CCW has expired. I believe they're going to have up until June of next year to be able to renew. There, there are options available to go to contiguous county, if you're in Summit, you can go to Portage, you could go to Medina, Stark, or Cuyahoga. It's dependent on whether those counties are open for business as well. I think that it's something that that process, to a certain extent, can be done. But there, there is a point where you do have to go in and get your fingerprints taken, so that has to be done in person. Certain aspects of the process could be done online, but I think there still is, there still is that in-person component. I, I think it's important for people to be able to get those processed and renewed so that they don't end up in a situation where, well, it was good last year, but it's not good this year. I, I think that the legislature has covered part of that within the new legislation, but it's still something that if the options available, available for you to renew, you can always go to a different county contiguous with Summit.
Okay, thank you.
Well, not hearing any other questions. Michael, I appreciate you coming in to speak to us. And good luck in the event.
Well, thank you, and, and again, thank you, everyone, for taking the time out of your day to listen to us speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, I believe that's everybody. Correct, David?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Fike. Michael and Rita, you're more than welcome to stay with us. We have a few other things that we're going to cover with our meeting, but like I said, you're more than welcome to stay with us, or if not, thank you for joining us. All right, everyone, we're going to back up a little bit and cover a few things that we skipped over with our early, and we'll make it real quick. Just a couple of things, day in history, I thought was kind of neat to bring up. Back in October twentieth, nineteen sixty-two, was when the Cuban Missile Crisis happened. It was kind of interesting that Kennedy pretended like he was sick at the time, and he was disappeared for four days, but he was actually in secret meetings trying to figure out what the heck he was going to do. He had three options. The group believed they either negotiate with the Russians to remove the missiles, to bomb the missile sites in Cuba, or implement a blockade. And as most of you know, he implemented the blockade and then ended up working. On October twenty-eighth, they finally made an agreement to remove the missiles. So that was interesting. One more thing that happened, any rock and roll fans, on October twentieth, Southern Rock Band Leonard Skinner's rock and roll plane crashed, killing three of the members of the group. And one thing that I didn't realize is Aerosmith, the rock band, was looking at the plane to rent it out, and they didn't like the safety concerns they had with the pilots and passed on it. So one rock group got lucky, the other one didn't. So, and for your sports fan, back on October twentieth, nineteen sixty-eight, Dick Fosbury won the Olympic high jump back in nineteen sixty-eight, the twenty-year-old from Oregon, won it in Mexico City and coined the phrase the Fosbury Flop. He was the first one to jump backwards style to win the high jump. So just a few neat things in history. Don't have any birthdays for any of our Rotary members that I see?
Yeah, excuse me.
Who's that?
It was last.
Nope, you just muted yourself, Robin. Okay.
We are experiencing some electronic difficulty?
Well, I think I unmuted him, then he goes and muted himself again, so.
I say happy birthday, son.
I did that last week. I gave myself birthday congratulations last week.
No, you, oh, did you?
There's no limitations on when your dad can wish you happy birthday. That's right, that's right, but I.
This is true.
Thinking about your favorite son.
I'll unmute myself.
But we do have some anniversaries for a couple of our members that have joined Rotary. Diane Gentile, she's been a Rotarian for one year. Thank you, congratulations, Diane. And Karen Samate, one year also Rotarian. Congratulations. With that being said, we'll just move on to some of our announcements. We have a board meeting this coming Friday at noon, so please feel free for everyone to join us. Also, October twenty-fourth, we'd been invited to the Macedonia Halloween Extravaganza at Longwood Park. We've been invited to put up a tent, and we can encourage people to join Rotary and hand out candy. Thing is, I need some volunteers.
What day was that?
That would be Saturday, this coming Saturday, the twenty-fourth. It would be between two PM and six PM. And I know the problem is the Buckeyes are playing. So, but do I have any volunteers? If I can get some volunteers, I'll do it. If not, I'm not going to do it myself, so.
I'll be out of town.
Got my grandkids.
Out of town.
Evan, just to let you know, our church is doing the same thing Saturday afternoon, and so is the high school, or the PTA is doing one at the high school Saturday afternoon.
Okay.
There's going to be a lot of competition. I, I never heard of it till just now. I didn't know when they planned it, but I wish everybody would have planned it either a different days or, you know, one big one, rather than having all these small ones.
Right. And, and I just got the email on Saturday from Brad up there, and I told him I'd bring it up to the club and see if I could get any volunteers. So I'll give everybody, I'm going to put a, an email out to everybody, and if I get the, a few people, and it sounds like Bill said he would volunteer, but I hate for him and I to sit there for four hours. So let me see if I get any more volunteers.
Bring the hot chocolate.
We're going to need it, it's only supposed to be fifty on Saturday.
Hey.
It's supposed to be sunny, it is supposed to be sunny.
It's not cold enough for the schnapps, so we'll just go with the hot chocolate.
So what I'll do is I'll put an email out to everybody, if I get some replies, we'll do it. I, I have a tent, I have a banner, I'd, I'd have to get some flyers put together and everything, but let me know as soon as possible, all right? We have a regular meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. We have Summit County Clerk of Courts, Sandra Kurt, and Mike Razor, Summit County Sheriff, Shane Barker, Candy Feathery, Summit County Fiscal Officer, Kristen Schalise, and Jay Ayu, looks like Lula, or Ayula. Those will be our possible speakers for next Tuesday. And do not forget about our raffle coming up on February sixth, keep that on your calendar. Anybody else have anything to say or announce?
No.
With that being said, if everyone would join me in the four-way test, Debbie? Of the things we think say or do.
First, is it true? Second, is it fair to all concern? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? Fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned?
Thank you, everybody. Great meeting, great candidates. Thank you, Mr. Fike, for helping us out on that, and we will see our board members on Friday and whoever else wants to join us. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.